Let all rise, please. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask Commissioner Johnson if he will have our invitation and place to the flag of our great nation.
Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you to say thanks for all you do for us. Lord, I will ask you to help us to make the best decisions for the citizens of this county. Lord, we ask that you look after our law enforcement, EMS, and the employers of Green County. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Fellow commissioners, is this time you have a proposed agenda for tonight's meeting? Is there any need for any change to the proposed agenda?
Here are no changes, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion and a second in further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify a simple saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. You also have the proposed consent agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed consent agenda?
Here are none, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion. Do I have a second, sir? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify a simple saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. At this time, I will recess the Board of Commissioners and reconvene the Board of Equalization and Review. Ms. Wiggins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As of today, there have been no formal requests for appeals for real properties to the Board of Equalization and Review. So at this time, entertain any concerns or issues from the audience.
Do we have any issues or concerns from the audience relative to the Board of Equalization and Review? Here are none, I will adjourn the Board of Equalization and Review and reconvene the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone for public comments?
I did not see anyone.
Okay. That being the case, Ms. Sharon Harrison.
I'm here this evening to present the 2024 Governor's Volunteer Service Award recipients. We have Linwood Bun, who could be here this evening, Robert Daughtry, Alan Harper, Tony Schinkleton, and Melville Lee Taylor. The Governor's Volunteer Service Award honors people who have shown concern and compassion for their neighbors by making a significant contribution to their community through volunteer service. Linwood Bun was nominated for his work with the Snow Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Robert Daughtry was nominated in the areas of senior, individual, disaster, and lifetime achievement. And he's been a volunteer since 2005 and maybe even a little longer than that.
I started volunteering in 1988.
Oh, wow. 1988. Alan Harper was nominated in the areas of senior, individual, and lifetime achievement. He's a volunteer with Fort Run Fire Department. He's a deacon at his church, a trustee, an active volunteer with a horse council. A long list of accomplishments, a mason, a shriner, working a lot with children. And of course, he helped with our fundraiser at the Senior Center that we had that was very successful by letting us use his livestock and equipment. Tony Schinkleton is very active in the community. He was nominated for individual and lifetime achievement. He does a lot of assistance with good causes for people in need and health concerns. His culinary skills, he does a lot of cooking for benefits. And he does a lot of that to help out. Plate sales, fire departments. And his compassion for others serves the whole community regardless of race, religion, or background. Melville Lee Taylor is a volunteer at the Senior Center. She was nominated in the areas of individual health and human services, lifetime achievement seniors, and historically underserved populations. She's been volunteered since 2007. She averages about five hours a week managing the jewelry-making classes and organizing and produce distribution, which includes sorting and supervising participants as they select items. She makes sure they don't get too much. So anyway, I just wanted to present these faithful and good volunteers and recognize them before the board. Congratulations.
Congratulations again to you all. We saw you a couple of hours ago down there, Mr. Daughtry, Mr. Harper, Mr. Schinkleton, Ms. Taylor. Thank you so much for all that you've done. And again, like I said in my prayer down there, thanks to all of our volunteers that help this county do all that we do. We couldn't do it without the volunteers. We couldn't do it without our county employees also. If you'd like to get a picture of some type, if you have an idea.
Can they go back?
Right, if you find it, come right on behind us and get a picture. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, bro. Mr. Brock Gergen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The second week of April is nationally recognized as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. We'd like to take this opportunity to recognize locally as well those men and women that serve in the 911 center and really serve as the first first responders. So we'd like to do that with a proclamation or resolution that we have drawn up. So I'll go through and read that resolution for you and the board will designate a proclamation. So, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 14th through 20th, 2024. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, they require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas the emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Green County 911 center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first first responders and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators of Green County 911 have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be resolved that the Green County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Green County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. About this 15th day of April, 2024.
You've heard the resolution. Do I have a motion we accept?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify a simple saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. The second item I have for you is a fireworks display request. We had a permit submitted to our office for the display of fireworks. And pursuant to General Statute 14-410, it requires the approval of the Board of Commissioners for the fireworks to be displayed. In the packet, I provided the documentation that was provided for us from the vendor, Pyro, Pyrotechnico. This is, we haven't worked with this company in the past that I'm familiar with. However, they have met all of our requirements from our office, ensuring that they have issued their standard operating procedures along with a safety plan and a map showing the display of what they're going to be doing that day. They've met all of our requirements. This requires approval of the board before we can move forward with submitting our approvals permit.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second, sir? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify a simple saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hit me out here. Is that Mr. Bowden or Bowden?
Bowden.
Bowden, okay. Thank you, sir. Like a bow and arrow, Bowden, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
I have some printouts, which I think might be helpful.
Okay.
Good evening. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present to you. Aaron Bowden, District Supervisor for Wildlife Services in the United States Department of Agriculture. And I'm responsible for overseeing the Fever and Mice Assistance Program in the Northeast 108 counties in North Carolina. So what you have before you is a summary of financial expenditures and results of BMEC activities within Green County. This summary, I was originally asked for 10 years, but our accounting system changed. And so I was able to give you six years. So one of the things, really, I just want to point out some of the highlights as to the importance of this program. And probably the most significant thing to key in on is for each dollar that a resident who participated in this program spent, they receive approximately $100 in value of protected resources. In addition to every dollar that they spent, they were matched with 10 additional dollars for their project from a combination of sources, which would be Green County and the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. Now, the funding, if you see on that first table there, has fluctuated over the course of the six years. Originally, the participation fee for the counties was $4,000. The legislature approved the funding increase to $6,000. And the Wildlife Resource Commission portion statewide is $385,000 a year. That has not changed in the past 10 years, and it is unlikely to change. So what we have seen happen is the Wildlife Resource Commission portion is available to all 100 counties. So as more counties have participated in the BMEC program, the commission share to each county has dropped by about 30% since 2018. So if you take a look at this, the amount of funding that Green County had in the BMEC program was actually decreased from 2018 to 2023, for example. So some of the other key points to look at is the total number of landowners served. It's something that we track. That number decreased beginning in the year 2020 and continued through the end of 2022. And the best indication I have of that statistic is probably due to the pandemic. Since then, the numbers have been increasing each year. And we have actually had calls for requests or requests for service, which we sometimes have to put off for the following year. The BMEC policies and procedures, which are supported by the advisory board and ratified by the legislature, stipulates how many, how much work we're allowed to do in each county based off the funding that we are given. So another key takeaway that everyone should recognize is that not all sites are equal. You can have a site with a lot of damage, significant flooding, and it can be caused by one or two individuals. You can have another place where it's just inundated with beavers. So the takeaway from that is it's highly variable. They're wild animals. It depends on the landscape, the hydrology, the geography, and endless other factors. I guess I'm open to whatever questions you might have for me in case I didn't hit on it specifically.
You said the Wildlife Commission only donated $385,000 to all 100 counties?
That is correct. So if all 100 counties participated, it would be $3,850 per county.
Right, not much. Do most counties participate?
The number has been increasing the last three years. And each year, it's a new record number. I believe it is 54 counties this year. Between 50 and 54. And on top of that, of course, we're also getting hit with increased costs of inflation. Vehicles cost us almost 30% more than they did three years ago.
See, they realize that they brought them in here.
I've been here for eight years and I can't speak.
They were before your time, I tell you.
I believe they've acknowledged that.
They need to get a better handle on what they're doing. Firstly, I think the Wildlife Commission has got the money.
Well.
Yeah, it's my opinion. But we need to talk to our legislators, I'm assuming, and see if we can get them to work with it and get more money appropriated for the program.
Yep. My understanding of that is it's, the legislature enacts the law as to how much the Resource Commission is going to fund. And to my knowledge, so far, there has not been a decrease in funding. Certainly not in my time here, I've been here eight years.
Firstly, I want to know.
Want me to? So 55 counties then perhaps participate in the BMEC program?
Yes.
And so the question I would have then, who determines how much each county gets?
It's divided equally.
Equally, regardless of the size of the county or?
Correct.
It's divided equally.
If the county pays the participation fee, they will get an equal division of whatever that amount is.
Does every county have a different plan? Is there, some counties hire a professional trapper to trap?
That is correct. Each county is like a snowflake. They're all unique.
Well, in Green County, we've been placing money in. Is that being used, that?
Yes, that is.
Every county?
Yes. There was a couple of years, the '21 and '22 cycles, where there was not additional funds. I don't really know what the reasoning for that was. I just work with what I've got.
Right, okay. How many people do you have employed to cover your area or region or whatever?
There are six BMEC specialists in these 2020s.
Sixty?
Six.
Six.
Just six. Which is a result of increasing costs and reduced revenue. So most of my BMEC specialists have to cover more area because our agency is just breaking. What we get is what we spend on projects.
One of the side, your area is the worst. How you identify your worst area? Is that how you all come at the problem?
There's a hierarchy to it because the other side of BMEC is our work that we provide to the Department of Transportation. Anything that affects public safety is first priority. But then when we talk about the private landowner side or the county side of BMEC, it is first come, first served until funds are exhausted. And that is how priority is based. And each county is given, if they participate, they get the matching funds. And when the matching funds are expended, everybody's on hold for the next fiscal cycle.
I wonder one thing, when we go talk to our legislator, if we can't get them to change their mountain fund, if we can get them maybe to change them, the amount, based on how much waterways each county have. Because some counties have small waterways, some county has a whole bunch. So I wonder if we can't get them to Christian, if funding is there, we can get them to Christian, probably, to check that's wrong, how much waterways each county have. Possibility. That's a lot of research.
There's definitely no comparison to the county in the coastal plain versus one in the mountains.
East of I-5, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
There are millions and millions of dollars of timber that have been restored because of the beaver.
And as you probably well know, even if the water level is not flooding over the top of a field, certain crops, if it floods up high enough, it rots the roots of the plants, kills them all anyway.
That's right.
And so it may not look bad, but it can still cost some damage.
Thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
Is there anything that you think we could do to help? I mean, carry on.
It is a situation where unfortunately, the more money you have put toward it, the better you're going to get a handle on the problem. We don't, it is not in our program to eradicate the beavers, but we want to be available to eliminate the problem where it occurs so that there's not financial loss. And we can only go so far with the funds we have.
Do you think that our legislature, it came to help fund this problem to make some good sound decisions? Maybe that's.
I think squeaky wheels get grease.
I think you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. President. Okay, minimize this presentation and maximize his. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me.
Hey, hey, dude.
Appreciate being able to get on the agenda and how kind of form warm me. We want to go pretty quick, so I'll try to do that. So I wanted to just give you an update on this huge transition with Trillium Health Resources, East Point, and Sand Hills. So as you all know and been hearing over the past probably four years about Medicaid transformation, we, as a state, were delayed four times of going live with the tailored plan where we not only are going to be working with people's mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use, but also their physical health. When the General Assembly decided to take a look at tailored plans and whether their success rate or not, in that process, they decided to move us down from six to LME/ MCOs down to four or five in legislation. I was here in 2001 when there was 41 of us. And now we're down to four. Okay? So they increased the total population of 1.5 million requirement. And then the secretary has the authority to make the changes to when we go live. Fortunately, the go-live date is now officially July 1. They have approved us, and I'll talk a little bit about that. You've heard a lot about this consolidation. So I just want to give you the timeframes. On November 1, the directive was issued by the secretary. Consolidation plans were due up to the state on November 17. The consolidation agreement was approved by Trillium and East Point on 12/15. The consolidation agreement approved by the secretary on 12/18. And the effective date was 1/1/24 for operations to be combined. And then on 2/1, the effective date for members and providers to join the system as one system. Here's kind of a look at our regions. We're now 46 counties, which is huge. Total population of 3.1. 51,000 tailored plan members, approximately 163 Medicaid direct members. And 287,000 uninsured members are now going to be covered by Trillium Health Resources. I want to make sure that you see the five regions. And Legacy Trillium has been in a regional model since 2015. And so these five regions, in the northern region, you'll see we have Warren, Hosky, and Camden. In the central region, there's offices in Wilson and Greenville. In the southern region, Pinston, Beulahville, and Jacksonville. And I point these out because we're keeping all the offices, right now anyway, of the Legacy Trillium, East Point, and Sand Hill. Now, will that change? I don't know. I do know potentially one of the offices that we had will be closing because it's loaned to us by the county. And the county has said our DSS is getting bigger and bigger, and they need the space. And so one of our offices may be given over to a DSS. I wanted to kind of show you the regional map. And I'm the regional VP of the north central region, which covers your all's county, Green County. So with tailored plan, like I mentioned, we'll be doing the behavioral health, substance use, and IDP population like we've been doing for decades and decades. We're the experts at that. We'll be now managing their physical health, which is a big learning curve for us because we have not managed, for say, an individual's diabetes. We have managed their mental health, but not their physical health. The other thing that we also have to be managing is all their medication. So every pharmacy in our 46 counties, we have to have a contract with them. So the pharmacy that you use, we have to have a contract with them. So the medication can be flowing through the individuals when they show them the Trillium insurance card. All right? You may have heard from previous presentations, the standard plan term, we are the tailored plan. The standard plan started in 2018. It got awarded and started up in July of 2021, where you'll see these five insurance companies now manage, which we used to manage, all the low to moderate risk, mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use individuals. So those insurance companies, I'll just say, AmeriHealth and Healthy Blue, now manage that Medicaid population that we no longer manage. And I say that because a lot of times when we get calls from the emergency room or something like that, sometimes those individuals are not covered by us. They're covered by these health insurance. sometimes those individuals are not covered by us, they're covered by these health insurance companies. Big changes in care management. Care managers have always been the experts at mental health, substances, and developmental disabilities. But now they have to take a look at whole person care. And so, when we talk about whole person care, the individual has to know what their physical health issues are that the person they're helping out. We have started new specialty teams, which is T-Star. In other words, as many of us know, the population that are the very high risk are in and out of the jail system. And so, we have started hiring staff to help manage that transition back into the community or the reentry program. We have a rapid access care coordination team that really works with the individuals that are in the emergency department on trying to get them out quickly. We also have a DSS foster care management team that is just getting bigger as this consolidation, because we have one person doing a lot of that. And so, with that, we need more folks helping with the foster care management. Like I said, we're doing whole person care now with the physical health, and the population health is part of that, where we will drill down into certain categories which define a high need for folks with physical health issues, like I mentioned, diabetes. These are just some of the projects that, and I won't go through all of these, but we're really trying to get an early start on prevention services, which is trying to get into the school system. We will be continuing, as my understanding, Narcan kits. We will be distributing those Narcan kits also. We're really trying to get into value-based purchasing, and what that means is, if someone is doing what they need to do treatment-wise, then we want to try to award, reward them. So those are just some of the brief overview, and Kyle, I hope I did that quick enough for you. Okay. And I'd be happy to answer questions, but I know that I'm also on the agenda, next, or not next, but I think it's after the session.
Yep.
You're going to ask for them.
Yep.
Yep.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I just like to say one thing is that, you know, there's a lot of changes and a lot of confusion. And it's more confusing than anything, because, you know, you take people that need these services, they're the ones that don't know what going to happen to them. So, and nobody is explaining to them about, you know, these professional services that is going to help them. And, and most of them don't see where they're going to get any help. Also, I mean, I mean, there's a lot out here, but the point is that people that need the services, they don't know what's going on. And the one who's trying to help is sometimes, you know, I don't know where they know what, what is going to happen to these people, and how it's going to work out, you know, for them. And then when you cut by of these forty-seven counties, I mean, you're just adding so much work on fewer people deciding about the problem that you have out there. And I think the more people that you have helping out with these ideas and things that you need to reach these people, you're going to miss a lot of ideas from people, because they ain't out there. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's a lot.
Commissioner, I couldn't agree with you more. All right, I mean, that, I've been doing this a long, long time. And when, when we got the directive to make this change in forty-five days, forty-five days to make this change, it was like, we're going to do the best we can with this. And, you know, my, my biggest concern is kind of exactly what you were saying, is I don't want anybody that was currently receiving services to fall through the cracks. That was my, and, and there's, there's a way to deal with that. Right? It won't resolve every single individual, but our biggest thing was getting twelve hundred provider agencies moved over into the Trillium systems. Because when we move those provider agencies into our system, and they all get paid, then the services continue. Right? That was my, so in order for no one to fall through the cracks, we had to get all twelve hundred provider agencies moved into our system, and we did that. And, and, you know, will there be bumps in the road? I guarantee there will be. And that's why I'm in front of you today to start this conversation. And, you know, I know Commissioner Jones has my information. I give it to every county commissioner that I'm in front of. It doesn't have to be someone that's just on our board. And so, I want to try to make sure I'm hearing the voices throughout the community. And that's my job. That is my job. So thank you for bringing up that concern.
Well, if somebody has a question like Mr. Shaker said, who would they need to call? Would they contact DSS, or call Trillium, or toll-free number? What would be the best avenue for them to take?
Yeah, it, it, one depends on if the individual's DSS involved with DSS, and some are and some aren't, right? They, they can always, I, I have phone calls coming in from individuals in the community, so they can call my cell phone, okay? But we also have a 24/7, 365 access to care number. And that way, and what I would do if I got the call, I'd send it over to the access to care folks who know what services and supports are available right then and there. So, what, we are of the philosophy, no wrong door. I don't want to say you have to go through this way, or you have to go through that way. So.
Services are there, if they can call that number, they should be prepared to get some help.
Right, and, and like I mentioned, those insurance companies, we get calls all the time from folks that even aren't under our plan.
The folks that are on your plan, under your plan, have that number?
Yes.
The access to care number?
Yeah, so, I brought a bunch of brochures also, but everywhere we go, we try to get that information out to folks. It's on our website. We try to keep it in the DSS offices, in the health department offices. We try to keep it, and we'll work with school administrators. Anybody that wants our number can have it. Yep.
Well, to me, it's, it's an awesome task for forty-six counties, for the number of people who need services. And the communication process has to be an outstanding communication process for them to know who to call and that sort of thing. It's, it's, it's a very difficult task.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
But if, but if it isn't executed appropriately, then someone could fall through the crack, and that's why we dove on.
No, you're exactly right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I kind of stepped on Kyle a little bit earlier when I was calling names out, and I didn't mean to. Mr. Cash.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Presented for you for adoption tonight is a brand-new Green County incentive policy. This is one of the steps for us to be competitive to land a major industry here in Green County by 2030, is to have a policy that is updated in the 21st century, that also safeguards the county from any liabilities, and making sure that the new company is recruited, or the existing industry doesn't pay, doesn't receive more money from the county than they're paying taxes. So this policy emphasizes that, that each incentive from now on, unless it's under $2.5 million investment, will go off a percentage of their new tax group. And it's, and we score that competitively for a process where we look at their wages, we look at the investment level, we look at other, other criteria such as assisting industry there, or if they already are on the main infrastructure, and other things like that. So, without any other questions, I would ask the board to formally approve the policy.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion for approval to have a second. I have a motion and a second. Now, any further discussion?
Basically, what did it change?
The only thing it changed is that we, prior to this, we provided incentive grants on a dollar value. So let's just use an example of, we would pay a company $10,000 a year. But what this moves to is percentage of your new tax group. So instead of saying $100,000 in investment and $10,000 in incentive grant back to you, we would say you would get 30% of your new tax group back, just, just to ensure that they did pay that tax in, and that we are not, we're never overseeding that. Me and Stephanie will be working very hard on this and make sure it's, but it's a, it's, it's just a safeguard for the county.
Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions? Here now, I will call a question. Those in favor of the motion signify super saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cash. Now, Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Our first item for action this evening is an appointment to the Trillium Regional Advisory Board. If you recall in past meetings, Mr. Jones, Krishna Jones is, I guess, an ex-Phisio member, because he is on the main board. But a second representative from the county needs to be appointed, and they must fall under the general statute 122(c)(118). And, well, one of those five things must be?
So, the five general areas are, one, an attorney, one has a fiscal background, one has a DSS background, one has a health department background, and one has a hospital background. So it can be any one of those five. And I'll, I'll just say, I want to apologize for the misunderstanding if I gave that to this group last time. So that's on me. I take that responsibility.
What's the wish of the board?
Move to approve, County Manager, for financial background.
I have a motion to appoint County Manager. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
How long? The regional board, not the government board, but the regional board, how long can, let's say, if it was a health department director, or DSS, whatever, can they serve as long as they want, or does it not take over three years or a couple of years?
There, there's not a term limit on the, on the seats, except for the chair.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, I got one question now. Have no problem with County Manager being a, of the, any other counties have County Manager on their?
Yes, there's a couple of other county managers that, that fill that.
Sometimes, you know, it's good to have County Managers in such way, but, you know, a, a person that's in the community that serves another community, that live in the community, you know, to me, that they might have more interest in the, in the, the community. Not saying County Managers don't have interest, and I'm not saying that. But, oh, you know, these people need to come from your community that live here, I think. They got more interest in your community. And, and some of them know more people in the community, been here in the community. And, you know, it might be a better fit if we had, if we could find someone. Then if you can't find someone, then it would be different. But, oh, for that particular person being on this board representing your county, I'm thinking, in my opinion, is that if the person that live in the county will have more interest. Not saying the County Manager don't, but he's supposed to be working for the board, but, oh, I think that we should make some effort to try to get someone in the community. You know, that's, that's my opinion.
I understand. Let's give this a year to be looking for somebody we think is well-qualified, that will represent the community.
So, you, we don't think we can find nobody in the community that well-qualified, that might be interested? And it may not be nobody interested.
Well, it might be, yeah. We have a lot of people on the serving board.
Exactly. And I know that, but have we made an effort to, to do that?
No, I haven't, no. I ain't had time. All this stuff's been in a rush here, what, the last two months, three months, everything better than the world.
Now, you know, that's just my opinion on it. I know it came in fast, and at the same time, oh, you know, we want...
Well, this is something we should have done two months ago when we talked about this board. We should have discussed that then, because then we could have been looking for somebody, instead of waiting till the last minute to try to find somebody.
Well, I think, I think it had been, been mentioned before about who might need, you know, need to serve on, you know, on this particular, particular board. Because see, the thing about it is, when you look at the whole operation of, of what this mission is of, of Trillium and, and, and the East Point, it's a lot for, for, for a few people.
That's true.
It's a lot. And then you go, you know, so, oh, that's just my opinion on it.
I understand your opinion. I just say this is something we should have talked about before we needed to make a decision.
Well, well, that's true too. But, there's a whole lot of things out here that happen so fast, you know, but I know what was taking place.
Based on a numerous, unasked email and request for information, I do not believe it to be appropriate to appoint the County Manager to the Survivor Board. Traditional workload would be overly perjuring for him. I acknowledge the specific qualifications required for board members, such as having a finance background. However, our community has several qualified individuals who could serve if given the chance. We have a dedicated employee like the finance officer from both the health department and the county. We have a necessary financial expertise. Important one of them would not overburden the County Manager. In fact, given the advisory board is focused on health issue, the health department finance officer would likely be a more suitable candidate. Select someone with direct expertise related to the board's scope with significant chances of failing a decision. However, we must ensure that we give this qualified individual from our community a fair chance to contribute to their expertise and serve in positions that align with their background capabilities. By appointing someone within our ranks and not asserting a position with risk, we risk missing out on opportunity to send the best possible person to represent the county on this board. Potential impact of all effectiveness and representation, I would not be voting for the County Manager in my.
Where have you other had somebody by?
That is completely up to you all. I mean, we, the, the voice, and I think you, you said, you want the voice of the county, and, you know, and then the region that, that the county is sitting in. And it's, I think it is pretty important to have the, the chair filled.
I'll be seeing my motion about how to do it, County Manager. All right, we got a month. Come up with some names, and we're going to scream before we.
Right. And that's fine. And, and I, and I don't want Kyle to think that, that I got anything against him, but if we can't find nobody, then we got to go with what we got, you know? But we, I think we should try to, you know, try to find somebody.
My point is, is billions of dollars is going through there. And I would like to have somebody that's got the financial expertise.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's, it's not going to be like that Kyle can't be, he can be knowing what's going on anyway. He gonna be the County Manager, so he, he should have a lot of privileges of, of, about the lunders and things anyway. So it's, it's not going to be he completely be out of the... So it's, it's not going to be, he completely be out of the picture on it.
For the county, it wouldn't be, you know? I'm calling out for the region.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking about the county right now, and, and, not the region. But I'm with you. I'm just thinking about the county.
I, I will accept, accept their rescinding of the motion. And we're going to take one month to do an effort to try to identify potential financially, well, one of the five character categories. We'll do, we'll do a search, and we'll make a decision one month from now.
Thank you, sir. Next item for action is a budget amendment for the landfill department to purchase a new compactor. The compactor is on our screen. Neat machine refurbished from best equipment. Total cost for the machine and the, and the transportation, I believe, is three hundred and eighty-three thousand and change. Mr. Jones has said this would meet his long-term needs in the landfill department in terms of a compactor. I think it's a great-looking machine. Anything you want to add, Dave?
The biggest, biggest thing is, you know, if you, if you remember some months back, I told y'all our engineer had done a survey, yes, maybe they have fifty years of life left where we're at. That machine is crucial in being sure you get that fifty-year life left. And another thing is, that machine can be worked on by local vendors, a little Washington. And, and we all heard of Calipso all your life. They've been making equipment for a hundred years. They still make parts of equipment that they put back in the forties. They still work on them. So, you know, that, that machine can be rebuilt over and over again. So this, and it can be serviced by, you know, somebody like, say, local, a little Washington, a rod. They get the phone when it breaks down, and it's been fixed.
Move to approve the budget amendment for the landfill department, Chair.
I second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Any further discussion?
Can I play with it, sir?
I want a picture of it. It's nice.
Oh, no.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item for action is a proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Awareness Month. This is a, an annual thing that we do. I've seen different types of proclamations. Some are local, some are state. This appears to be a governor's proclamation. Uh, if there are no questions, comments, or concerns, I would ask for approval of the proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Awareness Month.
So move, Chair. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, next item for action is an appointment to the LCC Board of Trustees. I've received a very nice letter from Dr. Rusty Hunt requesting that Commissioner Jerry Jones be reappointed to the LCC Board of Trustees. Um, I believe the letter is attached, actually. During the questions, I'd ask for the reappointment of Commissioner Jones.
Most of the, uh, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a tremendous metal spot for Dr. Hunt and his recommendation of Commissioner Jones for LCC Board of Trustees. Commissioner Jones is undoubtedly a highly qualified candidate. That, he might even be overqualified given the number four he serves on. However, absent concerns about appointing a member of our own board to the position, specifically I have not been provided with a clear list of qualifications required for this board. Based on my own research, it does not appear that appointing a commissioner is a requirement. If there is such requirement, that information should have been made available for, to us upfront, so we can assure our nominations align with established criteria. Absent that, I believe we need to follow our own standard policies and procedures for appointing members to boards like the, rather than making a set. Appointing a commissioner, even a highly qualified one like Commissioner Jones, could be perceived as per first treatment. To maintain transparency and credibility, I think it's critical that we are here to have fair and equitable process. We don't want anyone to think we're playing favorites here. That could really rub us in the feathers. There may be eligible qualified candidates in our community who would bring valuable expertise to the Board of Trustees. We should give these individuals the opportunity to serve if they deserve. I believe we owe it to both the board and the public to consider us all suitable options to an open selection process.
Any other discussion? Here are none. I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Motion is carried forward to one.
Thank you. Our next item for action is a Transportation Department Drug and Alcohol Policy Update. This revision to the drug and alcohol policy is part of a much larger update to the drug and alcohol policy, and it's part of the Federal Transportation Authority's Regulation forty-nine CFR Part forty-four, Part sixty-five. Basically, all transportation departments are required to do this. I hope you've had time to review it. Other questions?
Not many changes from the last one.
She did not highlight the changes, but she just...
It's a federal.
Yeah, it's to maintain our qualification, state.
Move to approve this chair.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Our next item for action is Change Order Number Two. I know this is Change Order Number Four, but if you recall, Change Order Number One was a series of three change orders. So anyways, this is a change order that will add onings. Onings, yes, sir.
One question.
Yeah.
Is this going to add days to the finish date?
May seventeenth will be the new finish date, when we add in all days for the additional four or two change orders, whatever, however we want to count them. May seventeenth is our, is our drop dead date. And this is for onings. County Manager may have forgotten to include that in an RFP, and, but to have it look as closely resembling EMS one and EMS two, some of the onings added and installed, an additional cost of five thousand dollars and change is, is with Change Order Number Two or Four, however we want to think about it is. Are there questions?
I think it's going to be through the next one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Move to approve a change order for EMS station number three.
Sir, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I can't help but feel frustrated that we find ourselves in this position again, needing to approve additional costs that were not included in the original bid. When we first approved the bid for this project, I opposed it not because I'm anti-EMS or feel the station is needed. In fact, the opposite is true. Our whole audience is supportive, especially our merchants' services. My concern at the time were we were not given the opportunity to review the plan or even a rendering of the building facility before voting to approve the bid. In fact, one individual stated it was their job to simply go with the lowest cost as bidder. But here we are, having to approve a second change order, this time for addition of three onings that were not included in the original RFP. Had we been provided with a building plan to at least a rendering prior to the initial vote, we may have been able to identify these types of oversights and avoid the need for these changes ordered. I EMS personnel deserve the best possible recognition, and I want to ensure that we get this project right. But this is a situation that we should not be in, had we have been given the chance to properly evaluate your proposal upfront. Unfortunately, this contract has shown no ordinate to the price increase, and it's simply been presented as another change order. Moving forward, I strongly believe that we need to implement a much thorough review process for being here to handle a scale of projects like this. Our employees and taxpayers deserve that level of scrutiny to ensure that we make an informed decision and not be nickel and dime down the line. Given the lack of audit to do this contract, I would be voting against approving this change order. We cannot continue down this path without respecting cost and its significant complaint. Our citizens deserve better. As a matter of fact, before y'all go to bed, I would challenge all of you to type in dog on it to see what cost you.
Any other discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye.
Close.
Motion is carried forward to one.
Thank you. Our next item for action is acceptance of a grant award. Let me see, that is the twenty-twenty-four Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. Total cost of this project is thirty-six thousand dollars. Thirty thousand dollars is the grant award. Six thousand would be matched, which is in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Really what this is, is a compactor for our recyclables. I think the way that Dave described it to me is the most simplistic way is best, that if a, if a compactor or a trailer fills up with recyclables, it costs the same to move it back and forth whether they are compacted or whether they are not compacted. And if they're compacted, there will be a lot more in there. We can reduce our hauling costs, which is really what is eating us up.
Yeah, we, we have, we have applied for these grants in the past, and we have installed three of these units at three of our convenience sites already in, in past grant rounds. And it significantly reduces the hauling cost, because you're hauling a forty-yard compactor that's packed, the material packed in there. Recyclables don't weigh anything either. So, I mean, where you use the same compactor, you put garbage in, you get ten tons in. If you put recyclables in, when it's full, it's got like four. So, you know, that's different. And what we're, you, three of our, well, actually two of our sites have loose steel containers. So, you know, you're hauling that, I mean, you're hauling nothing really. And, so, it's, it, the other three sites, it significantly reduces our hauling cost.
It's an increase in our hauling, or it's an improvement in our hauling cost efficiencies.
It's a decrease in the need for hauling.
Yes.
Same to you.
My goal is to, my goal is to keep applying for these grants until we get them all.
Oh.
One of your, one of including length.
This is the third one?
This will be the fourth.
This will be the fourth. We already have three.
Yes.
We have six convenience sites in the landfill.
Move to approve for this, apply for this grant, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Lastly, it's just informational. Wanted to provide you upcoming board vacancies. Please encourage constituents and equal people to apply, okay? Thanks, guys. That's all I have this evening.
Well, Madam Attorney, do you have any pearls of wisdom at this time?
Any of our own.
Thank you. We have several things I'd like to, to talk about just briefly. Our Senior Citizen Center is going to have a bake sale on Wednesday, April the seventeenth, from eight to four-thirty. You can go out to the Senior Citizen Center and get some nifty baked goods. At that same time, the same day, Sheriff Matt Sasser is going to have a medicine take-back event that day. And I think it starts about nine or ten o'clock, doesn't it? I think it's a little bit after the eight o'clock hour, but Sheriff Sasser will be there with the medicine take-back event that day as well. Would also like to remind everyone about the Boys and Girls Club Breakfast. It's going to be on Thursday, April the twenty-third, at the LCC facility on Harper Street. It starts at seven-thirty a.m.
Tuesday.
Pardon?
Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday the twentieth, I'm sorry. It's Tuesday, Tuesday the twenty-third. I said Thursday. You're exactly right. I surely did. It's Tuesday the twenty-third. Thank you for correcting me. I, I wouldn't, wouldn't want to give bad information, for sure. And was mentioned earlier, the National Communicator Week was, was mentioned earlier, but also National Animal Control Appreciation Week is this week as well. So I wanted to make mention of that as well as the National Communicator Appreciation Week. And also, on Thursday of this week, April the eighteenth, that's the volunteer reception at the Senior Citizen Center. It's a reception for those volunteers at the Senior Center on Thursday.
By invitation.
By invitation only, yes. And the last thing that I will talk about at this time is the Special Olympics. We'll have our Special Olympics at Green Central High School, starting at ten o'clock on April the twenty-sixth. That's a lot of stuff going on, in addition to the usual things that are going on. Ten o'clock, ten o'clock, ten o'clock. Special Olympics, ten o'clock on Friday, April the twenty-sixth, at Green Central High School. Any other Commissioner reports or recommendations? Uh, here are none. Do I have a motion that we go into closed session for economic development and attorney-client privilege?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We're going in. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. The motion is carried. We're going in.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second and a further discussion. If there are none, those in favor of the motion signify as I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The aye is have it. The motion is carried.
In order gentlemen.
Yes sir. Gentlemen have a good one.
Thank you guys.